Good afternoon, everyone. We'll be getting underway shortly. It looks like we stabilized on folks entering the conversation.
Yes.
Okay, let's get started. For those desiring translation services, please select the appropriate language by clicking the interpretation icon on the bottom of your screen. Welcome. My name is Kurt Gertner. I am the Assistant Secretary for Environmental Policy at the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and I will be serving as the presiding officer for this hearing. This is a public hearing on draft open space regulations proposed by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs at 301 CMR 52. The proposed regulations on which we will be taking comment today are a statutory requirement of an act preserving open space in the Commonwealth, otherwise known as the Open Space Act, which was passed by the legislature in 2022. We are recording this meeting for the purpose of accuracy. I declare this public hearing to be open at 4:03 PM on March 26, 2025. We're here to receive public comments on the draft Open Space Act regulations proposed by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs at 301 Commonwealth of Massachusetts Regulations 52. You may present comment this afternoon if you wish to speak. Please indicate that in the chat feature at the bottom of the screen or by raising your hand. Please be sure that your name is accurately shown, shown accurately, so that we know who to call upon. We will call upon commenters in the order that we receive the requests. When called upon, you will be able to unmute. Before making a comment, please state your name and affiliation, if any. Please limit your comments to five minutes and address your comments to the draft regulations. You might also send in comments by email to energyandenvironmentaffairs@michael.gendron2@mass.gov. That's M-I-C-H-A-E-L dot G-E-N-D-R-O-N, the number two, at M-A-S-S dot G-O-V by 5:00 PM today, March 26, 2025. Yes, that is today, and so do so by 5:00 PM if you're also going to be testifying orally today. Please include your name and contact information and refer to 301 CMR 52 in the subject line. The following are present today to receive comments on behalf of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, myself, Kurt Gertner, Assistant Secretary, Mike Gendron, Open Space Act Coordinator, and Ivy Powers, Deputy Legislative Director. The agenda for today's public hearing is as follows. First, Mike Gendron will give a brief overview of the draft regulations. After that, we'll open the floor for comments. Let's turn to Mike.
Thank you, Kurt. In 1972, Massachusetts voters approved the adoption of Article 97 of the Amendments of the Constitution of the Commonwealth, which states that the people shall have the right to the natural, scenic, historic, and aesthetic qualities of their environment, and that public lands or interests in land acquired by the, for the purposes of protecting the interest described in Article 97 cannot be used for another purpose or otherwise disposed of without a two-thirds roll call majority vote of the legislature. In 1998, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs recognized a need for a written policy to ensure that proposals to dispose of or change the use of Article 97 lands were appropriately considered and did not result in a reduction of Article 97 land over time. To that end, EEA issued its Article 97 land disposition policy, commonly referred to as the No Net Loss Policy. Among other things, this policy provides that EEA will not undertake or support Article 97 legislation unless the responsible agency or municipality has avoided and minimized the disposition or change in use of Article 97 land and replacement land will be provided. As a result of this policy, Article 97 legislation has authorized a net increase of 486 acres of land subject to Article 97 since 2015. While the EEA policy has been successful in preserving Article 97 land in the Commonwealth, the legislature recognized a need to formalize the Article 97 legislative process. To that end, in 2022, it enacted an act preserving open space in the Commonwealth, otherwise known as the Open Space Act, sometimes referred to as the Public Lands Preservation Act or the PLPA, which is codified at Section 5A of Chapter 3 of the Massachusetts General Law. The Open Space Act codified procedures for advancing Article 97 legislation, including provisions to ensure public notification, consideration of alternatives to the Article 97 action, and the provision of replacement land. It also directed the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs to take specific actions in response to Article 97 proposals and to promulgate regulations to implement the provisions of the law. EEA has now completed its draft regulations to implement the Open Space Act and is seeking comments on them today. These regulations do not amend Article 97, which is a constitutional amendment, and cannot be altered without a constitutional process. Rather, EEA is required by the Open Space Act to issue these regulations. The regulations interpret the Open Space Act to clarify how public entities can comply with the act's procedures and requirements, including those requiring public notice and engagement. The regulations also describe how EEA will carry out actions required by the act, including waiver or modification of replacement land requirements, issuing findings regarding funding in lieu of replacement land, and issuing natural resource value determination. EEA's actions are required by the act to support the legislature in the consideration of Article 97 legislation. The legislature has the responsibility to approve Article 97 legislation by the way of a two-thirds majority roll call vote, and these regulations do not change that responsibility. EEA posted the Open Space Act regulations for public comment on November 18, 2024, and held a public hearing on December 17, 2024. In response to the public comments received seeking additional time to review the draft, EEA extended the comment period and held a second public hearing on January 16, 2025. This public comment period closed on January 22, 2025. In its initial review of public comments, EEA recognized the number of commenters indicated in their feedback that their feedback was hampered by the length of the public comment period, timing of the public comment period hearings, or a lack of public awareness. EEA values public input as a critical component of the process for promulgating Open Space Act regulations and wants to ensure ample opportunity for the public to provide feedback. To that end, EEA has reopened the public comment period and is holding its third public hearing today. EEA's initial review of public comments also identified certain issues on which additional public comment would be beneficial. EEA is interested today in hearing more about these topics, in particular, notification. EEA is interested in specific feedback on where and how public entities must notify the public of a proposed Article 97 action, and natural resource value. To assist in determining natural resource value, EEA has designed an online tool to gather information that will supplement materials provided by parties. EEA is looking for specific feedback on this tool and other information that could assist in the valuation of natural resource value for both EEA and the public. Thank you.
Great. Mike, thank you for that summary. Now, open the hearing to public comment. If you wish to speak, please indicate that in the chat feature at the bottom of the screen. Be sure that your name, as shown, is accurate, so we know who to call upon. We will call upon commenters in the order that we receive requests. When we call upon you, you will be able to unmute. For making a comment, please state your name and affiliation, if any. Please limit your comments to five minutes and address your comment to the draft regulation. All right, Megan, can you call on our first comment?
Yes, our first commenter is going to be Jen Carlino. Jen, I have allowed you to talk. You should be able to unmute.
Thank you. I'm Jennifer Carlino, environmental planner for the town of Easton and a member of the Board of Directors for Massachusetts Society of Municipal Conservation Professionals, MSMCP. I'm providing testimony as a representative of both organizations today. I want to express my appreciation for this opportunity to provide additional comments to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs on the proposed regulation updates 301 CMR 52, disposition or change in use or disposition of Article 97 interests, particularly regarding public notification and EEA's online tool for determining natural resource value. Regarding public notification, our initial comment letters of January 17, 2025 adequately addressed our concerns, and we do not have additional comments regarding this issue. Regarding EEA's online tool for determining natural resource value, both organizations appreciate EEA's efforts to create an online tool to aid in determining natural resource value. We also appreciate the acknowledgement in the February 28, 2025 notice to reviewers that alludes to our previous comments that the online tool should be used in conjunction with local knowledge and field observation. We do feel that EEA heard that comment and is pleased with such a quick response by EEA to those suggestions, so thank you for that. The tool is a good start to providing an online resource, but appears to have two issues. The first is functionality for the user, and I fully acknowledge that some of this is probably my own user error, but the tool would benefit from having a step-by-step user guide, more information buttons that explain the icons and their use, or even a left-side toolbar that walks the user through the program. An explanation of what the report will show would also be helpful. I've submitted written testimony dated March 24, 2025 that provides screenshot examples of areas where the user would benefit from more guidance. This further highlights the need and request for EEA to provide a robust training effort, particularly for municipal conservation staff who would be using this tool. The second issue appears to be technical. The wetland data viewer, data layer was not functional when I tried testing out the tool, and wetlands provide essential natural resource value and needs to be available. Also, collaboration with Mass GIS and municipalities to ensure accuracy of the open space data layer is important. Easier ability to move data layers within the screening report would make this more user-friendly, and any ability to prevent the maximum record count, in quotes, freezing screens, unresponsive notices, or having to start over would be appreciated. Whether the land is described within the Open Space and Recreation Plan should be added to the evaluation criteria, and as previously recommended, site inspection should also be required of the land to be disposed and the replacement land by all parties. And I would like to personally thank EEA for demonstrating that recommendations are taken seriously and genuinely considered during these public hearing and testimony periods, and I look forward to continued collaboration on this important and essential process. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. We appreciate the comments, including detailed ones on the tool which we asked for, so thank you. Megan, our next commenter?
Our next commenter is Constance Gee. You are allowed to talk. You should be able to go off mute.
Thank you. I just want to read a statement here on behalf of Green Oceans in Little, out of Little Compton, Rhode Island, and protect our Westport waters from Westport, Massachusetts. Article 97 of the amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution establishes the public right to a clean environment and protects public land designated for conservation, natural resources, or recreational purposes. I want to speak specifically about Horse Neck Beach Reserve, which is an Article 97 property, which is here in Westport, Massachusetts, and is being, as has been, and may in the future be looked at for cable landing for offshore wind, for offshore wind projects. The proposed Article 97 regulations appear tailor-made to enable the state to rapidly advance green and construction, to, I'm sorry, to rapidly advance siting and construction of green energy infrastructure. These proposed regulations fit hand in glove with the recently passed 2024 Climate Bill, which fast-tracks the permitting and development of industrial wind, solar, and battery storage, and expropriates the authority of municipalities in zoning and siting these facilities. Straight out of the gate is the proposal that any subsurface easement will be deemed a non-fee simple interest affecting zero acres, therefore not requiring any replacement land if the surface is tidied up within 24 months of the initial impact. The Zero Acres Clause for Subsurface Easements, such as cabling, high-voltage cabling, is a novel regulatory construct, absent from prior policy. The idea that what is done beneath the ground has no effect on a natural area as long as no one can see it is absurd. The state proposes that to mitigate the impact of an Article 97 action, the replacement land shall be in a comparable location to the affected property and of equal or natural or greater natural resource value, or of equal and greater acreage, or of equal and greater monetary value as the original property. There is no such thing as replacement land when a beach or natural area with invaluable coastal ecology, public access, and cultural significance such as Horse Neck is severed by high voltage, by extra-high voltage cabling, but then no replacement land is required for subsurface easements. The state proposes that the monetary value of the Article 97 interest and the replacement land shall be the fair market value or value in use, whichever is greater. A monetary payout is peanuts to offshore wind companies or to any big developer, especially with green siding already given the green light here in Massachusetts. Throughout the proposed regulations, it is stated that the Energy Environmental Affairs Secretary reserves sole discretion to make all manner of judgments about valuing waivers and actions. The secretary's sole discretion is most frequently based on whether the proposed Article 97 action serves a significant public interest or is determined to provide greater public benefit than the Article 97 property does in and of itself. Centralizing power in one official, especially one appointed by a governor, prioritizing climate goals raises legitimate risk of bias, particularly if public benefit is interpreted to favor renewables over preservation. And one last point, at no point in the proposed regulations is the option of denying energy infrastructure on Article 97 lands mentioned. I would think that that would and should be an option. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you for your comments on the intersection between Article 97 and energy and wind projects. Megan, our next commenter?
Yes, and before we get to our next commenter, I just wanted to mention for our ASL interpreters, I believe that there is a plan to switch right now, so if you folks want to go ahead and do that, and I think moving forward, if you would like to switch between each person making a public comment, that would be best. Thank you. All right, and next person that we have is Karen Moni Brodek. I've just given you permission to talk. You should be able to go off mute.
Working on it here. Two master's degrees, still can't use these buttons. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Oh, wonderful. Great to see you, Kurt. Hi, Karen Moni Brodek, President of the Emerald Necklace Conservancy. Thank you very much for working on this incredibly important policy. We are submitting a comment letter. As you may know, the importance of Article 97, which I want to stitch onto a throw pillow, is paramount, and we, the Conservancy, and many community members around Franklin Park have been feeling it more than ever. The guidelines are so important, and we do have some feedback on the proposed changes that we are submitting today by 5:00, so you guys can get them. But overall, I wanted to mention that a lot of these processes, as you're talking about, are very opaque to the public. And one of the things that I think could be of great benefit is more signage about these kinds of changes, like physically in the parks, in the areas that are being considered for changes. And I know newspapers and websites are great, but I think nothing is, nothing is as effective as literal physical signage, even if it gets a little tattered after a few days. I think having something out there, very large, displays in the corners of the property is incredibly important, in multiple languages or with a QR code for translation. But just to say, there is, you know, some, a change being proposed or consideration, please reach out. I think that is, that is so important. In cities that I have been in that do that, I really applaud them. I think more and more cities and states are starting to do that, so I hope that that's something that you do. One thing that we have experienced in the project that we are struggling with right now in Franklin Park is that a city, the city of Boston in this case, had designated a piece of property, several acres, actually numerous acres of a property, to be Article 97 for multiple decades in an open space plan, and then after a new proposal came in, looked at that again, and made a decision that it was not Article 97 applicable. So one comment I have is, that we have, is that there should be a process for when a town chooses to change the designation of a property. I'm not sure the best way to do that, but I am confident that you smart people will come up with some ways to ensure that those kinds of determinations are made thoughtfully and with appropriate review. One of the things that I think is so tremendous about the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is its open space, is its public space, and it comes in a variety of forms, and protecting it is so essential. The Emerald Necklace and the citizens of Boston perhaps know this more than, than anyone. Certainly, park, park and open space is taken away all over the state, but we had the installation of the Baucher Overpass, the creation of a parking lot for Sears Roebuck and Company, the disposition of a portion of Franklin Park for a hospital. Hospitals are great, but it wasn't done in any kind of process like would be required today with the PLPA. So I really applaud and admire our forefathers and foremothers and their planning with the PLPA, and I'm hopeful that these new changes and guidelines can continue to protect all of the interests involved. One of the things we are also submitting in our comment is the fact that there are a variety of ways that these public spaces are enjoyed. Some of those are through ownership, and some of those are through other types of possession and use, care, and control, and all of those types of open spaces should enjoy the protection that the PLPA provides. Thank you very much for all of your work, making sure that our Commonwealth continues to have these kinds of protections. One of the things that our state law talks about is that cities and towns are subject to a lot of different forces, and that our public open space is a critical component to our public health, and that's why the Constitution has put those powers in the hands of the legislature and the hands of the Commonwealth, because it is there to provide our Commonwealth and our common health. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate both comments on public notice, including physical notice on properties, and let me ask Megan for our next commenter.
Currently, we do not have any folks in the queue to comment.
All right, if anyone would, go ahead.
Just got a couple. Glenn Ayers, give me one moment. I'll go ahead and give you permission.
All right, Glenn, you're up when Megan gives you.
You should be able to go on.
There we go.
Yeah, thank you very much. My name is Glenn Ayers. I live in Greenfield, Mass, and I'm speaking today as a private citizen. And I did make comments at the previous hearing, but the same draft regulations, at least to my reading, have not changed since that hearing. So I just would like to reinforce the fact that I find the regulations to be lacking procedurally in that the process is completely at the discretion of the secretary, and there is no required appeal process that is provided in the regulations, which means that essentially these aren't really regulations. They're not complete regulations in that they don't comply with the Massachusetts Administrative Procedures Act, which requires that all decisions made by deciding officers or the people that are the ultimate decision-makers have to be subject to some appeal process that allows the public to challenge or question bad decisions that are made. You know, elected officials like the secretary or appointed officials like the secretary, they make a lot of decisions, and some of them are bad decisions. And we have had a history of secretaries in Massachusetts in recent history that have been accused of corruption and have done a lot of unscrupulous things, and no inference made to the current secretary, but we have seen that in the past, sudden resignations and other things, because special deals were made or favoritism was shown to applicants for various things, and conflicts of interest were exposed. And so that just requires that the regulatory scheme, the regulatory framework, allows the public to challenge decisions when they are truly bad decisions. I'm not saying that the public should be able to challenge things based on frivolous issues, but when there are bona fide legal or procedural matters that come before the public and the decision is entirely at the discretion of the secretary, that essentially excludes the public and makes the public participation process, for all intents and purposes, meaningless. So I feel that these regulations would not be proper if they do not provide a legal mechanism for challenging through appeal, and all agencies are required to have standard adjudicatory practices and procedures, a regulatory scheme for allowing those kinds of decisions to be challenged through the administrative appeal process, and these regulations do not refer to any such codified standard practices and procedures for either formal, semi-formal, or informal review of bad decisions. So I'm going to raise my opposition to the regulations as they are currently drafted and say that I, I would hope and expect that the regulations will be challenged if they are promulgated in their current state, which I believe violate the Massachusetts Administrative Procedures Act and really violate the public trust doctrine that we, we expect our elected and representative government officials to always act in the public interest. And when there is no mechanism for the public to challenge bad decisions, that means that the trust has been lost between the public and the government that is supposed to be serving the public. So I'll leave my comments at that, at that stage. When the secretary has so much discretion, then that is an invitation to potential abuse, and I believe that without the proper appeal mechanism in place, that is a way of excluding meaningful input by the public. And thank you for the opportunity to provide comments.
All right. Thank you, Glenn, for comments focused on the Uniform Procedures Act and Appeals. And Megan, our next commenter?
Our next commenter is going to be Dave Our next commenter is going to be David Bosnowski. I just gave it gave you permission to talk, you should be able to unmute.
I've unmuted, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good afternoon, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dave Bosnowski, I'm president of the Falmouth Heights Mary Vista Neighborhood Association in Falmouth. I've previously spoken on your your last Zoom call and have submitted my 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 comments accordingly. I've not noted any particular change since the last Zoom meeting, and I do not have any particular comments relative to the the two aspects that you had asked about for today, which was the notification and the online tool. I would like to, you know, reiterate my position that we as an organization do not feel that these changes that are being made to Article 97 are in the best interest of the citizens of the Commonwealth. This this article was put in place for the protection of of open and clean spaces for the citizens. And I think that this is diminishing the the protections that that were intended for the the purpose of this article. I would also like to take the opportunity to commend Mrs. Constance Ghee for her submission on behalf of Green Ocean and the people from Westport, Mass. I think she summed up ours our sentiments almost identically. Absolutely everything she she stated, I would stand behind and submit the same statement. The 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 aspect of the the underground, any any changes to the underground use of Article 97 properties. It it's ridiculous to 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 completely ignore the the changes to the property or the the use of underground aspects of the the property. It's it's ridiculous to consider putting, for example, in our case, we're considering South Coast Wind is considering putting 1,200 megawatts cable directly under our Article 97 beach and Article 97 parklands. And and without even the concept of of replacement value is 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 should not be even considered in my mind. That the it's it's not, it's not the right place for this type of high ultra-high voltage cables on a through a densely populated community and especially under under playgrounds of our children. This does not belong here and it should not be considered. I I think these changes that the Heli administration is attempting to make, they've already done so on the permitting process. And, you know, as as the the prior speaker also mentioned, I think too much discretion is in the hands of Rebecca Tepper, the Secretary. And she is also the chairman of the EFSB, the Energy Facility Siting Board, which I think is a conflict of interest in itself. In any case, I think it's an absolutely egregious affront to the the citizens of the Commonwealth to make such changes and make it potentially easier for third-party entities to take advantage of our Article 97 properties. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your testimony focused on the intersection between energy facilities and Article 97. For everyone's benefit, the regulations that we put out in draft form have been the same throughout this public comment process. We will be reflecting on comment received from the moment we issued those draft regulations in November through 5:00 PM today as a group and then making corresponding changes. Megan, our next commenter.
Our next commenter is Buzz Constable.
All right.
Buzz, go ahead.
There you go. Thank you both, and as as others have, I I thank you for the opportunity to speak again and for yours, particularly for your requesting particular comments on items for which there were lots of diverse commentary in your in your initial hearings for this. I I my name is Buzz Constable. I'm a land use conservation attorney, working with many land trust interests and former member of the Special Commission on DCR. And I follow this and really do want to compliment you on your efforts associated with it. I'd like to address both of your of the items you asked to be you asked to address. With respect to notice, of course, the draft regs haven't changed yet, but I would reiterate what many, many people said in the first hearing. That is, the notification has to be effective notification. Asking the either the applicant or the agency involved to somehow notify it is simply not a way to have people and people who care about the environment particularly and who care about this law to know what's going on. I really believe that you should consider either having it on the environmental monitor, which a number of people read religiously, even though not everybody would get it, the word would get around quickly, or perhaps as a highlighted portion of the EEOEA homepage. But it has to be out there where people will see it. In addition, notice, you need notice for for the process of how you consider this, consider the program, which I think you've done really well with with the tracker and the other materials that are there. So I I I hope you can continue that. I don't think they're actually called for in the regulations, so you might make comment to them. And then, thirdly, with respect to notice, the EA should comment to the legislation, that's really what your role is here. And that comments, whatever comments you make to the legislation should be also put into the tracker and followed. Be nice if you actually put in where the when the hearings would be held in the legislature and what the final disposition is. But I think that's beyond your responsibility, but it would be good if you could do it. Shorter comment on the value on the value tool. It's a great start, you know, it really, it really, to the extent that it is kept up to date and remains as effective as it can be, it enumerates the categories of natural resource values. That's only partially helpful, however, because there's no relative balancing in a map. And and I recognize and assert that it's got to be within the Secretary's discretion as to how she balances the natural resource values. Very hard to make it empirical, and I think we need to cut her some slack. But I do think if that slack's going to be covered, going to be permitted, then it really ought to be subject to some enumerated reasons. And if the Secretary has sole discretion, she ought to be obligated to describe what those considerations were when she issues her her commentary. So I pay the notice, I think, needs to be cleaned up a little more. And the value, I think, you need to enumerate how the terms in which the Secretary will use or that she does use when she makes a comment. All in all, I'm very happy that Section 3 is passed, that the Open Space Act is is getting attention. And the the proof will be in the pudding of how you and your team get to be responsive for it and keep those forms filled out and let us all be involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Buzz, appreciate your comments. Megan, our next commenter.
Our next commenter is Carl Van Bunderdam. You are allowed to talk, you should be able to go off mute.
Hi, Carl Van Warmerdam. I'm with Deep Sea Defenders, organization dedicated to banning deep sea mining. I would like to second the comment of Constant Ghee and reiterate her points. One of the the basic issues that I have is with the the term net zero and the concept of net zero. Actually, there's no such thing as a net zero. It it goes against the essence of the 1972 law. Open space is what you have, it's open space. And once you open it and and trade it for some other open space, that's that's a minus. You're not making any savings there, that doesn't add up. It's the same as a net zero carbon. It's just a a tool for industry to keep polluting. So if they say, well, we'll plant some trees over here, we can just continue pumping out carbon into the atmosphere. So we, if we can have this piece of land over here to destroy, to unopen, to close, because this is the commons, the people's commons that you're closing, we'll give you another piece of the commons to destroy, a piece of land that is still open. So that it it's just a fallacy. And I so I'm definitely opposed to that. And also, the the which is not this part of this, but taking away local control, which was a different law that was just passed, but this is this is still part and parcel of that. So I'm totally against this plan. And I hope that some people will finally see the light that since we're in a six-mast extinction here currently going on, that we need all the open space that we possibly can, which is habitat for the natural world. And that that was the essence of the law. And so this is trying to little by little whittle away from what the people had originally wanted, taking control out of people's hands and putting it in to bureaucrats' hands. So I hope there will be reconsideration of the situation we are in. And that we we finally stop. And that's the only option we have. This is either we're going to stop on our own or we will be forced to stop because eventually that's what will happen. So hopefully we would do this on our own. I thank you for the comment.
Thank you, Carl, for your comments on the Open Space Act. And Megan, who's next?
We currently do not have anyone in line to talk.
All right, if anybody is interested in offering comment, please indicate. Okay, Megan, I see Sarah Freeman has entered the.
Yes, give me one moment, Sarah, you have permission to talk.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, good afternoon. I've attended these hearings. I've been a fan of Article 97 for decades. And I get I already submitted written comments earlier in the process. But upon listening to some of today's comments, I I guess I don't have all the answers, but I'd like to stress the importance of either appeal or somehow it it feels like we're assuming the Secretary will always be benevolent and on the side of the public. And that's a big assumption. Present company not necessarily the target of that comment, but it feels like we need to have some safeguards in place if we really are protecting our public open space. So thank you for thinking about good solutions for that.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Sarah. Megan, has anybody else expressed an interest in commenting?
No.
All right, let's give folk a couple of minutes and see if anyone else identifies a desire to comment. All right. Last call, folks, anyone else interested in providing comment today?
We do have someone raising their hand, Freddie. You are allowed to talk.
All right, thank you for this hearing. Unfortunately, I'm like coming to the party late. And I I live on the Fenway and am involved with the the historic parks in the Boston area. And this is, this is, this is really informative to listen to this. Like Sarah, I've lived with this and I always felt like totally protected by Article 97. But then, you know, living in Boston and being experienced with how things work, sometimes there's all the laws in the world don't seal the cracks that open up from it from exceptions by particularly powerful people. So I I do, I do depend on this law and we all do. I'm somewhat, and this is probably more of a question, so you know, I'm I'm not, like I said, I apologize. But I'm a little bit concerned about how money in lieu of land is valued because of the difference in value, the difference in dollars based on scarcity of resource and the difference in location across the state. For instance, you know, if there were to be a proposed taking along the Charles River, the valuation of that land, of course, would be much, much higher, which which it should be, and it is. But in making consideration whether or not a dollar valuation warrants the exchange, it might sound like a lot of money, which I'm fearful that it might tip a decision in terms of yes, because it's a lot of money, without regarding the relative value and the scarcity of resource. So I wish there were a way to to ameliorate that or to consider that kind of balance and not let it make a decision based on the fact, not on the quantity of money. I'm not sure if this is a suggestion or it's it's just a comment. And there may be provisions in there in the wording. I'm not familiar with the actual, you know, details of it. But I wouldn't mind if you can answer that, but if you can't, that's a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Freddie, for your comments. I'm afraid the format is such that we're just taking comment today. And I would note that Sarah Freeman in the chat mentions she forgot to identify herself unless she lives in Jamaica Plain in Boston. Megan, any other commenters?
Currently, we don't have anyone else with their hand up or.
All right, as before, we'll wait a few minutes and see if anyone else would like to offer a comment before closing the hearing.
Okay, I Carol Zeman.
All right. Carol, you should be able to unmute yourself and offer comment. Yeah, Carol, we see you have your hand up. We're if you're able to unmute, we noticed you've unmuted. If you're able to offer a comment, please do so. Yeah, Carol, I'm afraid if you're if you are speaking to us and offering comment, I'm afraid we can't hear you. I'm I'm sorry, I'm not sure how. Perhaps, Megan, if we have another party in line, we can go back to Carol in a few minutes.
Sounds good. There is currently no one else in line. Oh, one moment. Hey, Madison.
All right. Arlene, I believe you're up.
Thank you, I agree. I'm Arlene Madison, I live in Brookline, Massachusetts. And I have been a longtime advocate of PLPA and so appreciative of the fact that it passed and so appreciative of the fact that it passed and that we're at this process now. One of the questions I have is about when the system doesn't work. And I've read some of your regulations, maybe not every bit of it. But I'm wondering, one of the things and frequently asked questions is, what steps do I need to take before filing a bill? And the first step is notify the public and EEA of the proposed action. But what about those cases where the public entity decides that they are not under the auspices of Article 97? And they go ahead to make plans to change use of a piece of public green space? Is there anything in the regulation or do you plan on putting anything in that is oversight for when parts of the process are not working as they should be?
Arlene, our format today is not where a back and forth on these types of questions. I can, the team can take that as a comment and work that into our response to comments.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Megan, do we have anyone else? Otherwise, maybe we can go back to Carol and see if we can try again.
Yes, Carol, I've given you permission to talk. Do you want to go ahead and try again?
Yeah, Carol, I'm afraid for whatever reason, I'm really not sure why we are not able to hear you. Perhaps you might be able to type a quick comment into the chat and I can relate that to the record for you. I presume Carol's going to try and do that. And Megan, do we have anyone else we can call on in the meantime?
We do not currently, no.
Right, we'll either give a couple of minutes for someone else to comment or for Carol to type something in for our attention. Carol, in the event you're having trouble with the chat, you could also, we've got about six minutes to send an email to michael.gendron2@mass.gov if you choose to go that route. I'm going to wait another minute and then I'm going to close the hearing. In the event we don't have another person ready to comment or we don't see anything in the chat from Carol. All right. At this point, there being no other comments, I declare this public hearing to be closed at 4:55 PM on March 26, 2025. On behalf of the team at Energy and Environmental Affairs, thank you for your comments and attendance. We will now be working to incorporate all the comments received into the form of final regulations. Thank you for your time and attention. Wait, Carol's typing, hold on. Carol, at least we know you have access to the chat feature, that's good.
Okay, Carol has raised her hand again.
Let's try one more time, sure. Carol, you're able to unmute yourself, please do so. Yeah, Carol, I'm afraid we Yeah, I'm sorry, they may have disabled that on a public library computer. I'm not really sure what to attribute that to. Megan, you have a suggestion?
I do have a suggestion, Carol. So by the audio function on the, it's the microphone icon at the bottom left of your screen, there should be an arrow pointing up. If you click that, it'll say select a microphone. And you may want to try the different microphones that are offered. And that could help.
Wait another minute, Carol, I regret that we're having this problem here. But I do need to close the hearing in a couple of minutes if we are not able to make this work. All right, as previously discussed, I did already. Yes, I really feel like we have offered the public opportunity for comment. I regret your inability to join us verbally here. And if you, I'll give you another moment to type a comment into the chat, which I'd be happy to verbalize for you. Okay, all right. So the comment made on behalf of Carol is that she would really like the public to be allowed to speak, not just the secretary. And I think the major point here is all voices on the subject matter ought to be heard. And it's consistent with the theme we've heard from others relative to the secretary's role and that the public ought to have opportunity for input. And Carol notes that also that this point has been raised in prior oral comment and in written letters. Okay, thank you Carol, sorry about the difficulties there. And appreciate the comment made. And with that, again, there being no other comment, I'm going to close the public hearing now at 5:00 PM on March 26, 2025. And again, thank you for comments and attendance from all those who were here today. And also a little extra thank you to our interpretive services folks here who have been able to help us with this session. All right, Megan, I think we're good.